So we'll begin with the announcement of a closed session. I know it's slightly out of order on the agenda, but I think it's appropriate. We have the evaluation for our BSO and no reportable act. And now we're going to go ahead and start with the opening ceremonies, the budget allegiance.
Salute pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Please remain standing. Almighty God, we pray this day for your ever enduring guidance. We ask you to cloak us in wisdom and fortitude that we may dispense our knowledge and facts intelligently among all humanity of whom we serve. Amen. Thank you. All right, then I'm looking for agenda approval, addition and or deletion. All of our moves? Gallagher seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, and we'll move on to public comment. I believe I had one card. Tim Craig.
I live up on Turmo Grasshopper Way. Recently, we have a farm company come in called SRL Farms. There were recently some land about a mile away from here about two weeks ago. There was a crop duster flying over the area. Now, it's just 40 acres. Why they have to dust their crops for just 40 acres and trying to raise rice? It's, I don't know why they're wasting money. In the meantime, we live south of El Turge Mansions in Madison. In nine years, I've lived up in Turmo. I've seen six people die of stomach cancer. And it was all caused for, from the pesticides and what have you on it and water tape. That's what we're concerned about with right now as far as this company moving in across the way from us. We do have beehives on the property. We weren't, we felt as a community, we should have been forewarned that this company coming in and wanting to grow rice. The act commissioner was called at one time a couple of weeks ago by our neighbor. And the act commissioner said, well, maybe they were spraying seeds. Granted, they probably were spraying seeds, but at the same time, the seeds are also protected against pesticide, pesticides, and causing fancy agents, so to speak. So again, we are concerned about that. I moved up there, my wife and I moved up there to retire and not today with stomach cancer. It's not a good sight. One of our big friends, I watch him on a daily basis go from a healthy man to nothing in a year. And I don't want to end up, my wife and I beyond one another like these people up there would help. My number two complaint is our property taxes. We have no emergency services whatsoever up there to deem my $2,600 a year going for property taxes when nothing. You call sheriff department or anything, that takes a lot because they say that they're understaffed and underpunded. Well, where's our property taxes going for? And I'm not just talking about my property taxes. I'm talking about everybody here in the county that pays for it. Why can't we get more deputies on the sheriff's department so they can come up in and take care of our concerns up there? Last time we had crop growers move in, they left vehicles behind, they left their animals behind, and they left all their crap behind after they were told to leave back in, what was it, 2016 or 2017? We have to put up a lot of crap from these people. And again, I don't know where my $2,600, $2,600 a year goes, but it sure doesn't come back to us up there on Turmo Grasshopper Road. And that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do you want to stick around or can you go?
Then you're free to go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Do I have anybody else wishes to speak during public comment? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on. And agenda reports by board members. Mr. Gallagher, would you like to begin?
Sure. On the 28th of May, I attended an online CSAT board meeting that lasted a couple of hours. And a lot of the talk during that meeting revolved around the cuts that were going to be made in the state budget. And everybody's concerned regarding that, how, you know, a lot of that was going to be relieved to various counties and made up by some of the federal funding that's been made available. So it's still an ongoing conversation. They also talked about CMSP, which I didn't know Richard was intimately involved with until I looked at who was on the board there. And so I understand that he can, at some point, maybe we can have you give a presentation on exactly what that is at some other time so that everybody's up to speed on that. They talked about the 10% reduction in state employees, whether that be their salaries or just cutting staff. So that's going to be interesting to see, especially in our county that has many state employees. And they're also talking about the possibility of delays in the delivery of sales tax to various counties as well. So that was about it for that. We had a LAPD meeting yesterday. We continued with the MSRs on the fire agencies. Also, we passed the budget for next year yesterday and working on policies for LAPD. And this weekend, there will be a green waste day in Westwood and Lake Forest. There were a couple of bids there last weekend. It was in Third Creek. It was a success. It filled up with two bids right away. Had to get two more. So we appreciate the, the air pollution control district came up with some money for that so it helped the fire wise communities and got them sanctioned. That's all I have.
Mr. Hammond?
Hi. Sunday, we did go up to Ravendale and there seems to be a crop of illegal grows springing up up there. And so I've spoken to Dean about that and Richard also. So I think we're, I know we're short of resources, but we have to do something about it. I mean, they're just out there in front of God and everyone. I'm pretty psyched for people that live up there either. So I thought that, I sent a letter to the Fish and Game. The response was it's private property. So I don't know whether we're right with that, but maybe we're hunting with the water pollution. I don't know if you can try that too. But we have to find a way to enforce that, those illegal grows up there this year. Luckily, we have a measuring amp to fall back on. Goodness, we got that passed, so we have a tool to leverage those guys. Tomorrow, I have a, it's called Commander, the drone guy, that's still ongoing. We've managed to bring in a major company tomorrow also to have a meeting with Commander about the possibility of infrastructure around Sierra Army Depot. Well, in September, we have, Ivan Bolden, the head of public-private partnership guy from the Pentagon coming to visit our area, which will be critical to the development of the area around Sierra Army Depot. So all that's starting to mesh together with this COVID-19, a lot of that stuff got put on hold, but we're still working on it.
Thank you. Mr. Alma.
Thank you, Chair. I guess last week, we had our solemn waste meeting. And it kind of goes back to what you were talking a little bit about with illegal marijuana grows. The state can come in and charge the legal dump paying citizens to take their supposedly garbage properly. And yet, Bass Hill landfill out here, we have to pay $20,000 a year for waste discharge from there. That's just for Bass Hill. And you have the one in Westwood. And then you have the transfer sites in Beaver, in Little Valley, the old dump sites in Ravendale and Madden, which covers about the size of a postage stamp. We're going to have to go out there and drill test monitoring wells. One out of Erdol went dry at 120 feet. So now we've got to go down even deeper and drill another new well so we can monitor it because it went dry. I mean, it's going to cost us almost a million dollars if we comply with the state just on the water quality. And we had a speaker after the board talked about his property taxes. Well, now you know what, the state just turns around, heats it all up. And then we've got these illegals like out there in Ravendale and Turmo, they're going out there. It's, it's a mess. It's absolutely terrible. When it's right out from 395, it's supposed to be a scenic corridor. And you've got these huge fenced off outdoor grows, easily visible from 395. And there's four that you can jump right from the intersection of 139 and Turmo Grasshopper Road. And that's just the ones that you can see from right there. And you go out in the countryside, the ones that are hidden and everything else, it's just terrible. It's absolutely terrible. Talking about pesticide poisoning, those are the ones that are, are getting us. Because there's no rules, there's no laws, there's no regulations. The Department of Pesticide Regulation for the state of California, they have all kinds of rules and regulations of what a farmer can put on. There's nothing for this crop, these crops, absolutely nothing. No limits, no mixture rates, no nothing. But anyway, I guess I'll be on my soapbox.
Mr. Hammond?
I talked to the Jezzo Fire Chief yesterday, and Richard, we need to have a letter to the Plumas on how come they're not getting a man, call some peak lookout. I think that's kind of critical for us on this side of the hill. The other thing is, is I listened to the state on how they're planning on reopening schools and how's the county going to respond? Are we going to go to four cans? Looks like these schools are going to be a four-day-a-week deal now. So our employees that have kids can stay home with their kids on Fridays because that was the message from the superintendent, state superintendent of school yesterday. Just something we need to be aware of. And I went to LAPD yesterday also, and some of these fire departments, people are complaining about they're just going to have to face reality that there's just not any volunteers. It's sad. So anyway, that's all I got.
I did forget to add that we got a cleanup at Leaven Lake, and I'm successful. They did a good job there. This weekend, we'll be in the, in the fall, and we will be doing all the cleanups.
Please.
What we had like they had is the illustrious Fish and Game Commission. They have allowed the--
The Fish and Wildlife.
The state. The Fish and Game Commission passed--
State.
State. Passed where they can, the whole mountain lion thing, where they're going to, if there's a depredation by mountain lion, they're going to go out and haze it the first time. Second time, they're going to increase their hazing. And the third time, the kills, because they know what infected this lion is and where this lion lives, then they're going to have a depredation. And that's in the central and southern California. I think up here, they're going to try hazing it the first time before they get out of depredation permit. So I guess if they're going to start doing that, Richard, maybe with this wolf thing, maybe we can start at least hazing the wolves, the wolf back after the first kill and hazing the second kill. Because as of now, you can't do any hazing. So anyway, maybe that's something we can push forward with. I don't know, it's just silly rules, but whatever.
Flashback to high school, always talking hazing.
Go back to me?
Not me. I attended first five meetings telephonically. What I could say about these telephonic meetings is the sooner we get done with them, the better. People turn a minor term for Zoom zombies. We're wasting our time is what started to happen. The other meeting that I attended, thank God, that was live yesterday was a regional meeting. It's Lashon Plumas Sierra Community Action Agency. We had several folks from Plumas County coming over here to look over the city of Susanville's community garden. And they were duly impressed with the number of plots that have now gained purchase in that location. The other exciting news from the garden is, of course, that some of the plots are now dying, being used by the homeless. The point in the past that we've always talked about is how we want to deal with the homeless. And the requirement that almost everybody has is that they work for their living and that they learn the value of work and relearn their pride and their taste and such things. And so one of the goals of the community garden has always been to meet that. Right now, of course, it's still a garden, and so it's only a beginning. But I do believe that our only answer to the problems that we're facing along the river is not going to be with leasing powers, which are of at least questionable constitutionality, but instead in allowing these folks to understand the dignity of their own lives and the dignity of work. And so I hope that that sort of movement forward, which the Lipsca people were duly impressed by, is something that we find again. Because at current, I think what you're going to find is our current solution sets are failing and they're too expensive to maintain. And then speaking of cost, I've got some money to dole out before the end of the year here. Or we do, because that's our discretionary fund. I'd like to move $1,000 to the L L T T, to the farmer's market, which by the way, our first farmer's market is this Saturday in Uptown Susanville. My point here is that the Board of Supervisors, its position has been that we are going to encourage as much normal daily life as we can get back to with those modifications that we have to take for the COVID-19. And this is one of those examples where if an organization will work with us, that our public health, our very good public health officials will find a way to return us to some sort of normal. To begin with, there's the promise of the farmer's market. I have another $750 I'd like to move from the discretionary fund to the fair budget to help sustain the rental operations for the racers because the racers return to us this June 13. Again, this is the combined effort of those racers to the Diamond Mountain Speedway that would not give up. They kept working at it. And as long as that organization was willing to work at it, as long as those racers were willing to work with us, then we were going to find a way to enable their effort. And so not only will we have racing, but we'll have a limited return to the grandstands also. So, and again, this is an example of what the Board of Supervisors is willing to do for our constituents, for willing to put out that effort. That's the promise that we make. Then I also have another $750 for the Westwood Farmer's Market, which is going to begin at the last Friday, I think, in June. That's, and I have that, it's the Westwood Local Agricultural Education, Inc. I have that as information. And then finally, $1,000 to the library here in Susanville. They're not open yet, and that's the next organization that I'd like to see public health work at, finding a way. I know Mr. Gallagher's interested in it and working on it. I'd like to find a way to get that to happen. And with that, I believe we're done with the public. And where? Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, this Saturday in Uptown Susanville, Panzer Plaza, we will have a farmer's market. With that, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Does anything need to be pulled? Anything else, Jim? Temple moves, Hammond second for the consent calendar except for item G2. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, let's bring up G2. Barbara, are you there today?
I know, I, I bet they were ready. No, I'm, I'm really happy to talk about this topic. So questions?
Is this microchip, you know, bro?
Yeah.
Just for the board.
This was, you know, I understand the need for this one, but I mean, what was the other contractor that went out to R and D? Because this is a huge, a huge expense.
Over the three years, absolutely. So we require to have an electronic health record for our medical health department and clients. And we currently have a contractor, a vendor, it's called Echo. And we've had them for a while, and it is very costly, that contract, I believe, is about $172,000 a year. So it's very similar in cost. This is a little more costly because we have to do the development of it and the implementation of it. And for IT, it always is a costly thing. But we are so out of compliance, I think you've probably read in the cover letter that we've been out of compliance for years. And I'll just give you one example if it gives you an idea of what we're dealing with. We have audits, and the state comes and they want to know certain things about the demographics. And so in 2018, they came and we knew there were problems. I inherited these problems of no fault of anybody, it's just the system that we had. And so I've been attending meetings, and every time we'd have a vendor come, we'd spend half the meeting time then trying to set up and get everything to work. And they'd want to show us some of the new templates and reports that could be generated. And it wouldn't, they couldn't get it to work for some reason. So it was a wasteful meeting. And then I remember saying, who's, who's in charge of these meetings? And they said, you are. Because I was the one that had to make this correction and address the state, how we were responding. And so I'm like, oh, this isn't working for me. So we decided to really take a little deep dive into this contract. We could not get the vendor on board. So we released an RFP. But as that was all going, and they knew we were releasing an RFP, this is, this is the first round of RFPs last year. And so we were having an audit, and so we said, hey, you guys, can you please stand by? We need some help getting some of the data pulled. And so they said, sure. So the state came and they said, hey, can you give me a list of all your, your clients who are Medical and by age and gender and ethnicity? And we couldn't do it from the system. It was, we couldn't even get that list. So we called them on standby and said, hey, we need some help, we need this data. Crickets. We got an out-of-office reply from our liaison and that she would be out all, you know, a week. So we were stuck holding them back. So our fiscal team started looking through their files and they hand tallied it. But we found there were duplicates because of the system that we, it didn't tease out the duplicates. So then I had staff in the file and going file by file, trying to tally this. Well, state isn't going to be there forever while we do this. So to this date, we still don't have the capability to make that, to print that report. That's very basic. And the state is very frustrated with this. They, so we released the first RFP last year. We had this current vendor and another vendor apply, but they were bidding on systems that hadn't been yet developed. And so why would we do that? We're going to be the game pig and spend just this much amount on systems that weren't even ready to go. That made no sense. So we didn't, we didn't select one of them, and we went with the current vendor. And again, continue to have problems. We keep paying for catches and repairs, and we still get nothing. And we are actually on a monthly call with the state to get an update on where we are. So this year, we released another RFP. And FBI, the contract that you have, the proposal in front of you, they gave an excellent presentation. They actually contracted with Los Angeles County and with the state. And so we know that they will be current. And anytime there are updates that need to be made because of new regulations and laws and things like that, LA's going to bear the brunt of that cost of that. We may, you know, throw in a couple bucks here and there just to show that we're, you know, partners. But they're giving us a very nice break. So we felt that from the presentation that we saw, that it was a live, active system, and that they are already contracting with the state, so they are going to know what's needed. We felt this was a very safe and they demonstrated their success. So we chiseled down the costs of it. We really, there's still a line in there that we're working on. It's the training. You'll see there's a very high training cost. Knowing we can go virtual, I know how I feel about that with you, because I'm the same way, I'm feeling on these calls. But we'd rather have virtual training than then, you know, flying out there, staying at a hotel and things like that. So we're, we're working on, on cost savings there. It's costly. If anybody knows how to build, and we are giving a somewhat off-the-shelf product because we believe that will work for us with a few modifications for the last in county. So we pulled it down as best we could. The current system that we have is, is just unacceptable.
Is this something that goes to the college with to help out in developing some of this stuff or modifications or whatever? A lot of money that the college--
Yeah, we did release the RFP, and we didn't get any bids funding the college. And so it's, there's a lot of kicker requirements in there, a lot of behind-the-scenes safety stuff. So to answer your question, we didn't, were not able to get any information or support. And again, the college, you know, I'm not quite sure. We've gone to them for some other things, and it's just, this is such a comprehensive, client-driven and client-protected system that we have had our compliance officer take a look at it, and he's weighed in too. So to answer your specific question, we did not hear back from the college or get any information on how they can help. The current system we have, it is unfixable. And it's proprietary, so I don't think that they would share code with any other entities. We do have rights to all the data that's in there, and we'll get a data dump. But based on what we have, we'll probably really be selective. We're going to take the new system as our, our thinking and just, he did entry everything in with some checks and balances because the system that we have has a lot to do with getting information and outdated. It's junk, and we know junk in, junk out. We can't afford that.
Going to be asked? Looking for a motion? Gallagher moves. Hammond, seconds? Public comment? Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, and we'll move to the departmental reports. I think we're going to make a jump today and start with H5, which is Fund 128 Budget Appropriation for fiscal year 2019. Mr. Eagle?
Yep, can you hear anything? So, Mr. Chairman, Fund 128 in the county system has historically been used for a couple of purposes. One of which is to account for funds for the local transportation commission. And there's an amount of money in that fund that belongs to the transportation commission, which is, you know, a combination of city and county. So, and they have requested that that, those funds be transferred out of the county account into the transportation commission account. And so that requires appropriation, and that's the recommended action.
Any questions?
So what's going to happen with Fund 128? So, what's going to happen with Fund 128 after this money is transferred? I know we can't close it out necessarily in this fashion, so I was...
Well, there may continue to be a purpose for the Fund 128, but it will no longer have funds that belong to the Transportation Commission.
I believe administratively, it might be used for LTSA, what the remainder of that is for.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
What's your opinion for LTSA?
Last and Transit Service Agency. It's the bus.
The bus? That's the look.
Well, I'm a lawyer, and you ask my question, you know, you have to do it. So, do I have any more questions? Looking for a motion?
So, move.
Gallagher moves.
Yep.
Hammond, seconds. I believe we're going to do a roll call vote on this, if you can support this.
Supervisor Gallagher?
Yes.
Supervisor Hammond?
Aye.
Supervisor Alva?
Aye.
Supervisor Peter?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, let's take up H1, shall we?
Mr. Chairman, members of Board, H1 is a carryover from some weeks back, which was pulled forward, came due. There's been a change since it was presented on the agenda some weeks ago. And as you may or may not recall, there was identified by the Personnel Director slash CAO liability of accumulated excess vacation balances beyond the personnel rule of 254. That was identified, and the instruction was essentially making efforts to get that liability dealt with, to get back to the rule. Looks like we had, at least in some quarters of the county, a practice of not able to get a recognizing the 254 rule. And so, rather than dictate essentially that the rule will be enforced, we chose a process of meeting and conferring with our partners in labor, the different bargaining groups. And we came to a resolution of how to deal with those balances in excess of 254. Initially, the agreement was for the payoff of the balances. And the cap is 254, and it gets enforced, and you don't, either you use it or lose it as you accrue it. And for, that's it, the cap's 254. There were a couple of groups that said, "Slow up, slow your roll a little bit, Burns." Basically, we've got some of our members that don't necessarily just want to be paid out. We value our time on vacation maybe more than the cash in our pocket. So, give us a little more time to burn the balance down. And that's what slowed us up between last time we were turned aboard and now, is that we worked out a deal essentially to resolve these vacation leave balances in excess of 254 with a couple of the groups differently than we had with the other groups. So, we went back to the other groups and wanted to afford them the same opportunity. And I'm pleased to see that everyone's on board. We were able to resolve it by way of side letter with all the groups in a uniform manner. That makes it much easier for administrative purposes, both to the auditor's office, to HR, and frankly, it is more effective that there's one rule for all. So, what you have before you is a series of side letters and a resolution. The side letters deal with the bargaining groups that have defined classifications, and then consequently, we know, you know, what those groups are composed of in terms of staff. But then we've got the resolution that essentially deals with the everybody else for it. And standard is the same, and that is that you can either choose to be paid out the difference between what you have in 254. And we're hoping to get that knocked out for those that choose that option before this fiscal year wraps. I think there's some room right now. And then the second option is, is for those that want to not necessarily be paid out or given an extra period of time within which to do so, and that is up until December 26th of this coming fiscal year, this calendar year, to do that. But the cost of that is, is, you know, they've got to burn at least 80. And if they don't, the balance is reduced, and then they get paid out that reduced balance, the difference between that reduced balance and 254. So, there's benefits added for everybody. And it gets us down to the level that we, it should responsibly be from a fiscal management perspective. Don't know if you have any questions? Have any to answer any?
Any question?
20 dash 027.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond moves.
And the motion would be to ratify all the side letters and to adopt the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Alva, seconds. Do I have any public comments? Steve Dunn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. H2 then, let's talk about the fair.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I thought I'd start out because, as you know, any events that we do are subject to our county health officer's approval. So, I wanted to kind of give you the landscape of where we are, and then you can hear the presentation from the fair representatives. And I would like to kind of say that it's, again, a moving target. I know you've heard that from me before, trying to keep up with the state and what they're releasing and some of their guidance. And one day you're in, or out, and the next day you're in, and then sometimes they even modify that. So, I guess the point being is, this is a fluid thing happening. But we also need to be able to plan and prepare, and we also need to reach normalcy. And our county health officer is very much in favor of that. And so, as we're mitigating COVID-19, we're trying to do so in a thoughtful but reasonable way. And he has approved some of the, he has some standards that need to be met. And so, I've spent some time with the representatives here, Jim and Cheryl, and we had pretty good conversations. So, they're very clear on what Dr. Korver will be looking for in the plan. So, whatever you approve today, then I can take that to Dr. Korver, and they understand what he'll be presenting, or things that he'll be looking for. But I also wanted to share with you kind of the approval process and where we are with that. And so, I'm in a seatable letter dated May 26th, and it is to all the fairgrounds, CEOs, and board members. And it talks about having non-essential events at the fairgrounds. Now, this is specific to DAA fairgrounds. But I did have a conversation with the fair consultant at the state, and he assured me that this is the position of the CDFA. And so, the letter says that if you plan to have or host a non-essential event, you must obtain approval from your local authorities. And then it says, "No additional state approval is needed at this time." This is May 26th. But again, we need to also take into consideration that the approval would be Dr. Korver, again, with your approval, you know, it's the layer that's here. And he'll be looking for social distancing, he'll be looking for some other mitigation factors that will impact the number of people that go to the fair, that are allowed in there. And so, I believe we've come up with a very good, some options. And it also includes live, animal auctions and shows and things like that. And so, we've talked about that. So, they'll present that to you today, and just knowing that whatever the agreement is, then I will take that to Dr. Korver. And again, I feel that he will strongly support that. We also have some guidance from the state that, because you know there's mass gathering guidance, but there's some other guidance there that we would point to now. Where the state stands right now is that if they post guidance, we can use that guidance to open up sectors. And so, as things come up, we're looking at what guidance it would fall under and that we could hang our hat on. So, with that, do you have any questions for me before I turn it over?
Like on page 1 here, on number 6, where it limits the number of people through the gate.
So...
My question is, what happens if you have protesters show up?
Oh, well, I've heard the comment that we should have a protest there, but, you know, honestly, we're trying to do this in, again, a thoughtful, safe way. And so, when we talk about limiting at the gate, it's kind of like when you go to the safer stores, we just want people to have some distancing before then. And the number's coming in.
If we're talking about protesters, and they social distance, and they stay outside the gate and act, then they're acting within their First Amendment rights. Now, if they're rioters and they attack the gate, then that's a different topic. I don't think we have too many rioters in Lassiter County. They have some votes that...
Saturday, although people aren't social distancing at all, they're on mainstream.
So, I'm, what I'm here to say is that I think if we can walk through this and we can come up with a fair, I think that the other consideration you may want to consider is, I don't know what year it profits, and, you know, I don't know if it's going to bounce. But again, we're trying to look at giving something to our community so they can have a sense of what we're used to. And that's, you know, we are an ad county, and we want to support that. So, I'll stand back and let them talk and get, oh, you have a question?
Yeah, so you talked about July 26th, but yet last week, Colusa was going to have their fair, and CDFA stepped right in at the last minute and said, "No."
So, I did talk to the CDFA representative yesterday about that. And again, we, I don't have the specifics of their plan in Colusa, but what I do know is that Colusa County, they're doing things a little differently than Lassiter Counties from other counties. They pretty much jumped right to stage four, which I don't even want to get into the stages right now because that's a whole nother conversation. But it could be that the state is not approving Colusa County because some of the actions that they've taken to date.
Well, and that's the point, speaking to the activities that we have starting this weekend. These are the tests that show our ability. And again, the important part that I tell to each of these organizations when they come to us is the test is whether or not there's a spread of COVID from that that can be traced back to that organization or that event. And as we know from activities like the Cottonwood rodeo or protesting that's happening in California, those events are breeding grounds for the virus. And the test is whether or not you social distance. Often, you can get lucky, like perhaps some of those protesters will get, or the Cottonwood rodeo, where you've created the environment for transmission of the virus, but the virus is not there, and so you luck out. But what's going to happen to us is if we're able to do these events and stay true to the COVID plans that we have, then there will not be transmission of the virus. And we will show thus that we are responsible and can carry forward in our events. So, that is the steps that we're going to have to take. Those are the adult reactions that we're going to have to have. We can't be children in this event in these ways. We have to carry forward in a meaningful, thoughtful pattern with some form of discipline while gathering in groups. So, I think that's the answer to this, is we can gather in groups as long as we are responsible in the way that we behave.
Thank you. And I do want to add that Shasta County did get approval for having a junior livestock live show. So, again, it's kind of very specific. And the Colusa case, I did read that as well. That's what caused me to follow up with CDFA. And there are some other circumstances that, you know, we don't know all the details in that.
Did you run these plans for the CDFA?
Our plans, they pushed it back to us, depending on our local...
So, they, they take a look at this stuff?
Not interested, no. They do not, they're not interested. They want to know if our health officer, because our health officer is the one that's going to be the one that...
I get that, but I was just wondering if they...
Were not interested, no, they weren't interested.
And gave you one that they liked, and then...
Yeah. Honestly, I think with Colusa, it's a different situation. Like you were saying with Cottonwood and some of the things. You know, if you're willing, if you go out there and make a big deal about it, why ask for the state to come and look at us, you know? I mean, you have to be also smart about that, too. Not that we're hiding anything, but there are counties in this state that are really struggling. They're struggling with their cases and with deaths. And so, we are not one of those counties, thank goodness for that. So, they're struggling because as we open up, and we're like, "Yeah, we're open." And their people, their constituents are saying, "We want to get our hair cut too. We want to go to do this stuff." And they don't even have the variance approval yet. And so, we're a big, large state, and so, I think it's hard when other counties and other county health officers who have to really tighten their reins in their area are hearing about other counties having events. I will say that as a small county, I don't hear that out quite from them when they're getting all the funding either. So, you know, we've got to have something, a feather in our hat somewhere along the line, so...
Well, and I'm pretty sure that our county health officer had to listen to it when we took our step back.
Oh, yeah.
And so, and yet, that was partly a responsible action, which has gained us credibility in the eyes of the state government and allowing us to just forward with our care plans.
Nice statement.
Thank you, Barbara.
Well, I see you guys got some information on there that I think is... Our committees have put together a full plan for a fair, done one for a five-day, or three-day, and...
So, actually, the plan is, there's five plans. There's a plan for a full fair with a full livestock auction and a livestock show. There's a plan for a full livestock show and auction with only a three-day fair. There's a plan for a three-day fair with a modified livestock show, where the livestock would come into the fairgrounds on the day that they were supposed to show. They would be tagged and waiting, they would show, they would go home. And they would show on the normal day, so like sheep shows on Wednesday, they'd show on Wednesday. So, swine would show. These plans are varied because of, you don't know where you're going to be in the whole process. You know, so I was trying to cover all our bases when we worked on this. So, the three-day show with modified livestock would allow the livestock come in and go home, with the livestock returning Saturday night before the fair, or before the auction and having the auction, which would be, in all cases, modified for social distancing. Instead of having a small portion of the pavilion being used, we'd use the whole pavilion to bring in more grandstands. I think that's all stated in the plan. But that the fourth plan would be just that livestock show with no fair at all. And then we would have, the final phase would be, if we get put down totally, we'd have the virtual. And we plan on having the virtual in place just to be safe because we don't want the kids to miss out. They're going to miss out on the show if we can't have the show, but at least we're giving them something. And with all that, the 4H still exhibit show. If we can't have either the five-day fair or the three-day fair, we would have a still exhibit show later in the year in conjunction with the 4H and their barbecue, depending on how they're able to do that. And possibly even at that point, maybe add some more community activities because maybe our community will be open that more. You know, maybe increase the floral, have a special flower show or vegetable show and a car show, and maybe some kind of barbecue contest or something. Just to improve the morale of our community and allow them to come out and do something. Any questions on the plans here?
So, if you have a three-day fair, or the three-day jackpot, doesn't matter, what three days are you looking at, and what species, what days?
So, the three-day fair would be Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The species would show on the same day they always do. The species would show on the same day they always do, which is listed in the video book. So sheep would show on Wednesday, swine would show on Thursday, beef would show on Friday. I'm not sure honestly in my mind right now where the goats were going to go because we had kind of been changing some stuff around because of the Nigerian dwarf goats that were planning to come to the fair. With that show, we would still be able to have a breeding show, we would still be able to have the kids that didn't have a market species or a market animal to come in with their heifer or their dwarf goats. With the virtual, I don't know that we can have a breeding show, but we can still have that show to place the market animals to put them in the sale.
And if you have the no fair with just the jackpot, it would still be the same thing?
Yep.
Sheep would be Wednesday.
Yes.
And also new convention, every day and then have the sale.
That kind of gives us a way to like space people out, I'm sorry, space people out a little bit, also social distancing and cleaning up the areas. If, so sheep come in on Wednesday, when they come back on Saturday, they go into the same pan they were in, there would be no mixing around, so that it's all kind of same material you can make that, I guess.
Same.
Yeah.
What's. So we're still planning to go virtual also at the same time?
Well.
Just because of what's going to happen?
Correct, correct.
So is there a fee involved, is there?
Yes, there is a fee involved and it depends upon the company that we choose to do that with. There's four, I think, that they're looking at, that the livestock committee is looking at and they have until Tuesday, no Monday and next week to make their decision. I think the fee was $35 per exhibitor and that pays for the judge, it pays for the virtual, all that kind of stuff. It pays, there's probably some kind of other fees that it pays for, but those were the things that it paid for.
So Richard, could I donate my discretionary funds to pay those fees?
To waive the county fees?
No, for the virtual fees, what if they're not half and so they're.
Yeah, that's an interesting question. We might have to research that, could be a donation to the livestock auction committee?
Yeah, that's where.
Or give better for the fair.
Well, so, correct me if I'm wrong here, but my understanding is that the Junior Livestock Committee, which is a separate entity from the county fair, operates the sale and that's who would be contracting with the auction company? Okay, so that's, so that's who you would want to contribute the funds to.
But, so let me clarify a little bit.
I was, go ahead.
I was just going to say that I think that the fee is for the show part of it, is I, am I not correct with that? Because that's for the judge, so before and the auction part of it might not be the same company. And the auction part of it might just be, I don't know if they'll base it on that show because they're not connected, does that make sense?
If those are the facts, if the show part, the livestock show has always been a function of a fair, not the livestock sale committee, so if those are the facts, then I would think that yes, you could contribute to the county department, which is, and pay for that cost.
Okay, are there any other questions about the plan?
So Cheryl, what's the difference between the dollars if we go to a three day fair?
Well, that's part of your, yeah, part of the plan that I developed, I did a budget and I did a budget based, part of it is revenue, part of this is expense, you know, I brought it, I showed what the revenue was for 2019. And then when I did the full fair, I based it on kind of limited numbers, especially for the seating in the grandstand areas. So we went over at the diagram of the grandstand and figured out how many we possibly could have in there to make it work. And that includes the festival rounds because Barbara felt that we might be able to make that work if we figure out some way to do the social distancing. The three day fair was without some of the events that happened during the fair on both days and then obviously there's not going to be a lot of income if we just have a livestock show. These were no implemented for food. And then virtual is just going to be the revenue maybe from entry fees that we begin from kids doing the, having to, they still have to enter the fair, no matter what we do. As far as expenses are concerned, that was again, based on what we know we have coming as far as like entertainment. And if we have a three day show, it's funny, we have to still have the lighting for the three day show versus the five day show, you know, for the stages. And the one named City Lights, if we went from a five day show to a three day show, we only cut $200 off.
So one of the reasons for that is they come up so much earlier.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and that included, you know, all of, just all of the things that, you know, like the walking entertainment or it won't be walking because, yeah, the ground entertainment, they won't be walking, they'll turn on a stage kind of thing. We, I kind of just did a percentage of what they might cost because we won't be putting them in a motel for five days, we'll do it for a shorter period of time. And again, you know, when we get to the virtual show, I don't know what the cost of that is, so I didn't really include that, but that's the livestock that, or at least part of it is the livestock auction committee. And the show part of it will come from us, but without knowing which direction we're going to go, I couldn't really put it in there. But for the most part, you know, there's going to be expenses no matter what. So.
So you're, it looks from what you have here that you would lose $60,000 going from five day to three day.
Well, and that's us, we would.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, your budget would lose $60,000.
Right, no, I agree. But we also note that Mr. Wolcott, you've been talking about extra money that we got from California State Fairs this year. So I, I think this is wonderful work. I was, I heard from the, I heard from folks that were at our last meeting that my criticism was harsh at times of our fair manager and the advisory board. But the nice thing about when you face a harsh critic is when you come through in your efforts, that means that that critic then has to admit that work is first rate and that I certainly feel, and I think I speak for the board when I say we appreciate the effort that's gone into this, we appreciate what's happening. You've already heard me brag about Saturday with the races and the grandstand there. I understand that we've driven you very hard on this matter, but it is very important to us in terms of the morale of the county of Lassen and show that we are responsible and able to do those things that are part of our legacy, part of the values of Lassen County. So I for one, feel like we can start with, from the assumption that we would have a full fair, even with the fear of losing money, because we all know that that money that the state of California has forwarded us could very well disappear if we were to bankroll it. And so I for one, would like to start from that assumption and then work backwards in your plan depending on if the situation occurs where we need to modify to a three day fair with the show or such.
Originally we had a announcement that down below where a lot of people go to the concert, we're going to have a hard time in doing anything down there. And we can put chairs down there and hopefully they'll sit in them, they'll be spread apart, so Barbara and I were talking about that a while ago, a couple days ago. And also the grandstands are going to be shorter because we have to have assets for it. And races have already gone and planned up to earth and so we'll have a good plan and I think that's going to help the rest also. So I think that it's just going to be kind of tough to, especially with what came to the dangerous play on the group entertainment. So we'll just have to work on that and I mean, I don't want to have the rating prices up there and things, but we've got to figure out something.
Well, like I said, I know that often this board has put a lot of pressure on you in terms of making money at the fair or at least breaking even, but like I say, I think this year with the COVID crisis, I think that it merits a different reaction, so.
Do you have any comments to develop there? Was there any thought about having a senior only day since you're going to limit people coming in anyway? I mean, that's, I was kind of thinking of it in terms of instead of the three day, have a four day, have an extra, but if you're thinking about a five day, maybe make one of those days either the opening day or the second day is senior only, make maybe the people that are a little bit more squeamish about getting out into the community able to come and feel better about doing that if they know there was an entire group that has probably been, you know, sheltering in place for some time.
I think, I think that one of the things that's going to happen with that is going to have, it's going to be up to the health department, up to that, would even why.
There is, in the nature of what we're attempting to do, in the nature of any attempt to gather in groups, there is personal responsibility that lies at the heart of it. I, well, I understand the natural fear that goes along with something like this, that is going to come down to, I think, the individual choice too, so. I think we're going to have to throw this public comment at home and if you would like to step to the side, in that way we'll allow folks to step up if they do have public comments.
No, this is from the, this is from the highest representation.
Huh? So please step forward and state your name and then there are a lot of us here, so please try to keep it to three minutes if you're able to.
My name is Davis, what do you see? I have a couple concerns. I believe that outbreak that we had in the six came from out of the area. I like to know how we're going to keep all the counties, the vendors, all that, to make sure they're safe to come into our county, make sure they're working and protected. The other thing you guys are all talking about, controlling, I mean, what's going on, the stands, controlling, I don't know how you're going to do that. And then on top of that, you're going to have outposts, so that's the race, that's content, that's current, how are you going to control that once that's up? You see that beard arm they got right there? Are you going to let them police that area, tell everybody to move and keep on moving on? I guess we're adding a lot more stress to the fair than needs to be.
Well, the initial races don't have food or beverage sales going on, because again, we're talking about an event that's going to occur mid-July and so the first thing that we're going to have to show using that event as an example is whether or not it can be done safely and securely, so.
So what are the requirements for the carnival or the game, what are those requirements coming into our county?
We even saw we have a carnival somewhere.
Actually, Jim, we do have a carnival, right?
Yes, yeah, I've got a proposal coming in.
But you don't have the contract.
Yeah, I'm not guessing. They've already sentenced what they want and I'm going to finish up that today.
Just for clarification, I think if Jim corrected my wrong, the contractor who was contracted to provide a carnival that's canceled, it was not going to do exactly, and you're currently working on a different, is that correct?
Yes.
And if I may add something, because we did talk about this, actually, she used the.
Yeah, I think we got an extra one here for you.
And I believe I.
Redundances. And you got to turn it on, there you go.
All right.
A lot of fun, isn't it?
Yeah, not really. So I just wanted to address that and you raised some excellent questions and those are things that we've actually discussed. The carnival and I advise them that that is something that I would need to talk to Dr. Korver about. One of the things we talked about was whoever this vendor might be, proposed vendor, that we would have a conversation with them and the conversation would be, how are you mitigating COVID, how are your, how many people would you be bringing up here, how many riots, have they been COVID tested recently? And so we'd have to have them kind of like COVID certified, safe, if you will. And again, if there, there's a time incubation period where they could test positive, one negative, one day and then, you know, a few days and be exposed and still test negative. So that incubation period we talked about of viral load and so we would space it so the time would be here, if everybody tested negative, which they would have to be, it would still cover that period where they would be at the lowest risk of being contagious, although we can't pinpoint that to the minute. And then what PPE, what personal protective equipment would they, we would require them to wear? So we have, so those are excellent questions. We've also talked about having, so what, either marshals walking around or some kind of hoax in addition to law enforcement, just some people just reminding people, hey, social distance, we're really going to use the raceway event to see if they're listening to us. Jim will be there, he'll be monitoring that. If it's a, if nobody's listening or complying, then we'll have to rethink and we'll have to educate the community that if we want to do these types of events, they'll have to comply, we need to get through this. So again, you raised excellent questions, thank you for that.
I guess my other question is that, all the kids that bring animals into the fairgrounds have to sign a contract or a contract saying that they waive fairgrounds being responsible if they get COVID. So how are you going to tell the general public the same thing? That they have to waive, if they're coming in here and they get sick, it's not the fairgrounds or the county's fault or anybody else's fault?
Is that happening at the races too and once they enter?
I'm not quite sure about the raceway when they enter because those are participants, so participants are there longer, they are around in more closed areas more longer than general public walking through. I think that we can apply that to pretty much everything in the community, like shopping, at the grocery store, people are not.
But if you're requiring, if you're requiring our children sign a contract and us to sign a contract saying fairgrounds not responsible if the kids get COVID or if adults get COVID, why is that different than the races or?
Well, and the races are required, Simon C. just said if they're participating in the event, that's different than entry, although as you point out, entry to the event itself is going to be considered a limited waiver of liability, one would assume. In the same manner in which when you enter the grocery store or Walmart, you are waiving a limited, your responsibility for base hardware, it's the one I see a lot of folks having. So I understand your concern. In the end, it's going to come down to a personal decision as to whether or not you do it.
But I have kids that raise animals and want to do the whole thing. I mean, if you guys are going to fair, it's going to be really hard to keep anybody out of this. We haven't had any, so I just want to make sure that we're not getting, bringing the infection here.
We understand your concern and I completely understand your concern as I stand at the counter of my bookstore and watch people bring them in while I appreciate the money that they bring to me, at the same time I worry and I attempt to mitigate that by keeping my distance from them, washing down public spaces, washing my hands quite often. And so it's going to come down to a personal decision as to whether or not this mitigation is enough, I understand it and that's.
And speaking about wiping things down and all.
Comparison with Safeway and IGA, there's people coming from out of the area and shopping those.
I don't, I don't disagree at all. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that we're going to have a lot of people up here for pitch, we got vendors. Or we've got vendors, we've got carnies, we've got whatever, they're all coming and hitting us all at one time.
You're saying sure that Korver's going to let the carnies come in, right? So.
Or that our vendor numbers are down already to the limits with you. And in fact, that's one of the results I can tell you on its face that the farmer market has already faced, is a limited number of vendors because of their opposite concern of yours, and instead of having too many people, their concern is there won't be enough customers. I understand that. But to wit, we understand your concern, and that's why we're attempting to, in a limited fashion, start to open events in a responsible manner. I appreciate that your question in a way, because on Facebook, Jan, of all inequity and evil, I hear other people that tell me that if we don't open the fair, that they'll hang us from our thumbs. So I wonder, you know.
That's a hard decision for you guys to make, I wouldn't want to make it for you, but that's what you guys are also going to do.
Well, and what I treasure this board for is despite the positions that we come from, what we're trying to reach is a moderated, centrist approach to this problem that meets both your concerns and the economic concerns of those folks who rightfully, whether angrily put it or not, seek for us to return to some sort of normal business. So, and I, so I understand your concern, I hear it, my share. And in fact, like I said, the idea of marshals and I call them the no fun please, keeping the spacing of grandstands is going to be very important, and as I've asked the sheriff and the police department with, while they use education to enforce, for the most part, on those standards that we've been setting in the county, if might require more active education, then they're comfortable with, but that's the situation that we're at if we want to be able to gather and march.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your concern. While I think we've still got others, do we have any other, we're still in public comment or open comment on this, do we have anybody else that wishes to speak on this matter? Mr. Bridges?
Jerry Bridges, I live in Fairbanks, Kentucky. I just, I just want to thank everybody that's put all this effort into this, making this move forward, because you know, as you help our foster family services move forward, we would definitely ask for quite a bit of money. That, for Shil, is going to be our biggest fundraiser of the year, and it looks like it's going to be going forward, and because of you guys, Barbara, Jim, everyone's hard work. It's, I can't thank you enough, so you're very much appreciated, each and every one of you, so thank you.
Well, and the task for this particular event is going to be that we have enough volunteers that are able to control the crowds, so one of the areas the foster family services might look at is how many volunteers they can bring to it, and hopefully that you meet with public help in order to learn the best ways to be part of the no fun. So thank you, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Please. Please state your name for the first.
I'm Nikki Diltz, good morning, and I really want to say thank you to Jim, the Fair Board, Junior Livestock Committee. We are 35 days from the first day of our fair, life was normal. A lot of these kids that are showing livestock, especially the vegan kids, bought animals in September, and they had a target date of my animal has to be sale ready by July 16, 17, whatever day it is. The problem now is because the entire state of California has canceled, all of these companies that offer things like new virtual sale are being bombarded trying to get shows and sales together in the amount of time, because some of these kids aren't being canceled until the day before their animals are supposed to be ready. So it's really hard as a parent, and that's the only capacity I'm speaking in at the moment, is as a parent, we're telling these kids, okay, in 35 days, we're going to try to have a fair with a backup plan of a virtual show. The only plan that is 100% corporate from being canceled at this point is a virtual show, because up until the last minute, all of those other, we could have something catastrophic happen, it's unknown. So I just ask that when you make your decision, take into account the deadlines that these kids are going to have to abide by, or potentially switch to last minute. Some of these kids, in average, if you're not from the area, it must be a hundred, is an average cost that these kids have to spend on a serial product is about $4,000. To exhibit a landmark, a figure, looking at a thousand plus. And most of these kids have put in countless thousands of hours with animals. So while I'm not talking about the carnival, all the other fun things we get to enjoy, I just ask that you really consider the risk that these livestock kids are taking, and understand that they might have to switch feet really fast if the plan that you pick is changed or canceled last minute. Thank you.
So Barbara, this question from A to U is, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Which button?
I did. We've got a faulty volume there. So Barbara, so we decide to pass Plan A, and Dr. Korver looks at this and says, no, you can't have a carnival, it's too much risk. Is that how, that's how this goes?
The short answer is, it would be like a line item video, so it wouldn't be the whole thing. He already has conceptually approved it because social distance, he has very strong concerns about bringing people into the county, and we don't know where these people are coming from, we don't know their practices in terms of how they plan on keeping the rides clean, and, and our, you know, so that's why, and what I've talked with Jim and Cheryl about is that if we're going to move forward with that suggestion, we'd have to look into it, and we would have to have a call with them to find out what their mitigation factors are, and I'd have to present that to Dr. Korver. So that would be, that's why I said that I think it's the highest risk of not taking place here, and again, what that means is, I don't know the income, I think that's probably a big income generator, I'm not sure, I didn't look at the budget, but, so that's something you'd have to consider. If we took that out, is that a deal breaker for you guys? So, or, or do they have a good plan that they're wearing masks, they're wearing gloves, they are sanitizing the rides after so many things, or hand sanitizers for the kids, or the riders to, when they get off the ride, and have the people been COVID tested before they get hurt?
I don't, the crowd here is more interested in making sure we have a livestock show instead of carnival, and that's more important than having, that having livestock shows at the outpost is more significant than a carnival. As far as I'm concerned, I mean, I've talked to a couple of kids, they're scared of us by the have carnival, they just want to make sure that they can show their animals. So I don't think that we can really be focused on that, I mean, it's.
You could approve a plan and catch that.
Yeah, it would be optimal, I mean, if it was up to me, I would say, yeah, let's not have a carnival this year and go ahead with the livestock show, and then sell a game parsh, and get all those serious street orders, and then let them have to bring their cars down for a day.
Especially since we don't have to break contract from the carnival anyways, it's already broken off.
So if I could just address that maybe just a little bit, I think that's a really good idea, you know, with some of the vendors, I think the fair is contracted with, there are elements of contracts that need to be considered with whether or not to have them, entertainment, et cetera. In the case of the carnival, we have a hall pass, right? We don't, they canceled us, so we don't have a vendor to provide a carnival now. It doesn't seem like there's a huge outcry from police members here today regarding having a carnival, and it may be a simple way to just reduce the sheer volume of people that would be on the ground there to not have a carnival, and use that space to spread people out.
So, Barbara, can we go with like Plan A without a carnival?
And as I discussed at the meeting where I gave Mr. Walcott needed instructions from our board, I'm not certain I'm going to be dealing for a vote, but I think it's more direction to staff is what we're looking for here. Don't you think that's correct, Mr. Egan?
I do, and maybe broader than just just the carnival, is there are other vendors I think that come from out of the area, and maybe the direction is to limit outside county vendors, whether that be food vendors or carnival. Mr. Egan, probably Mr. County.
Well, I went to the last Fair Board meeting, that was actually a suggestion that was made, talked about, limiting people from outside, having more of a local fair, an outside fair. It seemed to be supported by most of the Fair Advisory Board at that time, so, and that'd be the direction that I think I would want to go as well.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, anybody's thing. I never do that. So, so, I appreciate that approach from a legal perspective, I just feel it helps point out the obstacles, that's my job. How do you enforce, checking for local versus non-local, where's the line? Secondly, you've got some legal hurdles that exclude the people possibly, that's all I'm saying. So, challenge.
And if I may address the concert that, I believe Friday night? We are in contract, and I don't know if there's some outline just there, but we have talked about how we can do that with, again, where the stage managers or whoever's helping the band set up, where are they coming from, and keeping them somewhat, I don't know, quarantine's the right word, but away from the public, you know, they do their job, they set up, they break down, they don't need to be mingling, going to the fair, and then also walking into the Hill Street questions as well. So that is an out of, the entertainment is out of area.
Mr. Alda?
So, and that kind of ties in everything. Where do we have with the vendors, the concert, the out of the area people, as far as contracts, who are around, entertainment, et cetera, can those be easily dropped? Does it cost us money?
I can answer that. I can answer that. So there was a point in time, every year as fair approaches, we give these contracts between the county fair, between the county and the service provider, the vendor, whomever, and it occurs over the course of months. Sometimes you'll all get a bunch of contracts in February, you'll get more in March, you'll get more in April, and so no one could have predicted this COVID thing up until the early part of March, right? And that's when things were really starting to hit. So prior to that time, most of the contracts didn't deal with this, all of the contracts, right? Nobody was entertaining that we were going to have this massive shutdown of livestock and scene. Since that time, I did provide language, and Mr. Walcott asked incorporated it into, I think, all of the agreements that were struck with vendors, language that essentially puts the vendor on notice of the potential full cancellation of this going, that we were uncertain about whether the fair would be allowed or not, and that it's exclusively the call of the fair manager, whether we're really going to need their service or not. So I guess what I would say is, yeah, did we entertain that in the agreements? Yes, we did, after a certain point. Up until that point, no, nobody could have foreseen that. And so I don't know which one specifically you're talking about, I've looked at a couple of the meetings on, I know that one did not incorporate it, and another several did. So makes bad, Mr. Alda, makes bad. Just like a lawyer, it depends. Kill you. Please, Mr. Governor.
So if we were, you know, we're in contract with people, obviously, there could be no clause to get out of that contract, so if we have some contracts outside the area now, we'd have to skip it. Future contracts, if we're not, if we're not actively looking for vendors, and, say we have openings of advertising sites, RFP, then what's the problem with just incorporating local vendors to go over there?
Well, so I wouldn't exclude out of town necessarily, if you can ensure, say, that we have fair competition obligations for expensive public entertainment.
Have we put out an RFP for that?
Well, RFP would be now the fair.
Well, anytime, have we done that already? Has we got an RFP for vendors?
Not small individual vendors, you know?
Okay. So in reality, if we haven't advertised outside the area, we could advertise locally for those people and not be excluding anyone.
Yeah, I think that's probably a fair view of it.
Also, the experience of the farmer market suggests that vendors are going to self-limit by distance because of their knowledge of what our budget shows for a five day fair, is that if they travel up here, they have a good chance of losing money, which you'll find most for-profit businesses are not going to race into that sort of environment, so.
How many vendors are we talking about?
For what?
For the fair, I mean, like food vendors and stuff.
I don't know the answer.
I just was going to say that as of the time I did this plan, we only had 11 vendors that had, that had contracted with us, some of which are local anyway. And definitely, yes, we would.
So it's not like we're bringing in a hundred vendors.
Yeah, we would entertain inviting local people to the things of the fair.
Good morning, Tricia Wood, a parent, woman, exhibitor, livestock exhibitor. I don't mean to be curt, but we're losing sight that this fair is mainly about these four age, half day kids who have put their literal blood, sweat, and tears into raising meat animals, to save money for their first car, college, whatever they want to do. You can't put these kids on hold. They have a marketable product that if you go beyond a certain date, your product that is now perishable becomes a bad product. I understand that the Junior Livestock Auction Committee has a pickup day for our butcher truck, is that correct? We cannot move that day, which means we cannot move our auction day. I believe fully in a virtual sale and livestock show, only because with this COVID-19, it is a personal responsibility for everyone to take when they're going. However, I am also a parent of a immunocompromised five year old, so now if we go forward, I have to take the chance of, I can't go watch my son watch, his brother can't go watch his brother watch because he has immunocompromised, so now we have to spend potentially 14 days apart in order to protect ourselves. This is my son's first year, and his rite of passage is still a steer. He has been drugged, he has been kicked, he has done everything possible, he has four animals he's raising. You can't put that on hold for any of these kids. So I plead with you to please focus on these kids instead of a carnival or a concert or what the public wants. These kids have put a lot of work into these animals. Thank you.
Do I have any more comments or questions?
So, we're not making a motion, we're just directing the staff to move forward with the virtual show and the.
What's the plan? What they've given us that starts at a full fair and then moves downward?
Minus the carnival. Minus the carnival.
I mean, if you, I think you can make that as a motion, then that way you would give clarity to the fair manager.
That's my motion, is that we move forward with a full fair, along with a virtual show, so if J something comes up, it's all taken care of, minus.
To the day.
Minus the carnival.
Second.
Have a hell of moves, Gallagher second, Mr. Walcott, do you have something to add?
You're talking about no fair, I mean, no, I'm sorry, no carnival.
No carnival, don't worry about a carnival, you know.
How about outside vendors?
We don't care. If you guys want them, you can have them, that's.
Yeah, we don't have very many, so, okay.
All right, do I have any other comments?
Just one, Mr. Chairman.
Then we'll have Mr. Alda, so it'll be at least two.
I think Mr. Wood makes a really important point that if we go forward with a live sale, you know, there's a. you know, there's the potential that something occurred between now and show day that outside of any art control requires closing that, and they're looking for some certainty, I think, in what's going to happen. I think there needs to be a real clear contingency plan for some sort of show and sale for livestock animals.
That's my intention of my motion, but there we go with virtual, virtual along with the lives--
Without moving the-- But I guess my point is that there's three parties involved in that. There's the county, the health officer, and also the sale committee has a decision-making role in how they conduct that sale, you know, outside fair, because it's occurred on fair, but it's not a fair operation. So, I don't know if it hurts from anybody, I know we hear it, but it hurts from anybody from the sale committee.
Certainly, we'd love to hear from you. That's called putting you on the spot, I believe.
Wayne Leyston, Chairman of the Junior Livestock Auction Committee. I'll clarify what Mr. Eaton brought up earlier, is that the auction committee is a separate entity from the fair. We are a contractor. The fair contracts with us to facilitate that event. We don't charge them for it, even though we're contracted, we don't charge them for it. We take the information that the fair gives us as far as the qualified animals for the sale, we've been on the book. So, that isn't different, that is the same. What we are also looking at is a whole bunch of meetings, whether we do Zoom or whether we're able to do it live, and the most common word in all these meetings is "plan." And we, as a committee, are not interested in that virtual thing. And as of Wednesday night, that will all be resolved, because courtesy of the committee and everything, the research has been done, we will meet product. And as a contractor and a committee, we will make a decision on which virtual availability or which virtual option is going to be the best for us to put into place. We're going to plan for what we know we can do, no matter what happens. So, if it anything, take the sale off your list of concerns, we're going to do it, and we'll do it with the options that we know we can do, no matter what happens. Or, if another plan is approved, and we end up doing it at the pavilion, or the functions we've done in the past, we'll do that as well. We've all, like you said, we've done that for years, we can pull on those together, 30 days per week. This virtual deal might not be a different animal, no point intended, but we will put that into place. It will be set up, if we need to go that direction, we'll be prepared to do that. There will be a sale. So, I can hopefully, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I just want to take that off your list of concerns or anything you have to give any effort, decisions or about.
So, Wayne, the sale will happen on the date of this plan?
Yes, and to back that up, the reason why, without giving too many detailed details, the processing of the market animals, we have a scheduled appointment that Wolcott needs to be able to receive those animals on Sunday, the 19th of July, and have that process done so that they can be returned to Idaho Grocers to be processed through the buyers. And if we give that date, that given the state of processing in the world right now, we will not get it back. So, if that is the one date, the July 19th, of all the dates we have to consider, that's the date we cannot change.
As the contractor, obviously, Lassiter County appreciates that you do it at such a low rate. We would like you to consider, though, that we are the contracted individual, and so, as you make that decision, and we respect your making that decision, we ask that you consider that Lassiter County, the Board of Supervisors, would most like something that is non-virtual but is live as much as possible. So, we appreciate your consideration on the matter, we understand that date of the 19th, and like I said, we thank you for being on the spot for us. Mr. Alba, you have a statement?
Well, comments, first off, Wayne, I want to thank you and your committee for all the work you've done out of this year and in the past. It's been stellar, you guys have accomplished great rises for the kids and the fair animals. You know, I think this virtual sale is kind of more of a blessing in disguise, because I think it's something that even if you do have a live sale, still hold it virtual. You've got a lot of people that come from Reno, from Redding, et cetera. Maybe something comes up last minute when they can't show up, which is going to support the community or specific gift, they can still get online and bid on that animal. And I think it's a great thing to keep for the future, so maybe it's something you guys want to look at, even going ahead, whether it's COVID or nothing, I think it's just going to add to the diversity of buyers and more opportunity, et cetera. So, I think it's something to look forward and to value and embrace as we go forward. You know, as far as the fair goes, you know, there's a lot of volunteers, Mr. Swayze, you're one of them. You've dedicated a tremendous amount of time, a hot sun, long hours, and you're just one of them. There is multiple. And as you look at these plans, it's going to take a whole dozen events with. And last night, Jack, he isn't able to call himself to do this, nor has anybody else that spent a tremendous amount of time. I think Jim would like to call himself, he goes around, Ashwood, Cheryl, and a bunch of other volunteers that we have in the community to help out. As you go through this plan, you know, the amount of extra help that it's going to take to put this on, it is amazing, it's outstanding. So, I don't know where that extra help's going to come from, and I don't know where the expenses look fine, but there's also a bunch of extra costs associated with this. The extra hand sanitizing stations, the extra help at the gates, take the tickets, to do all the white downs between events.
The gate, by the way, is contracted, I believe, it's not voluntary.
But it's still going to have to take extra help. To do the monitoring of the barns, of the sale, the extra deals of going to the fair, the extra bleachers, the affluent guns getting donated, moving in the back, if there's going to be a big cost associated, somebody's going to have to pay to go get those bleachers and take them back. And that is considered in there, if you might have saw. The extra sanitation supplies, whether it's bleach or whatever, to wipe all this stuff down, it wasn't considered. You know, so there's a lot of other expenses in here that are going to be associated with putting on a fair that I don't see a foot on here. And, you know, we've harped for a good number of years, but the fair needs to do what it can to pull its own weight, so it's not a general fund burden. We've heard that for years, the fair advisory board and the fair manager, they have done a lot to diversify it, to get different events, thinking outside the box, to work hard, to donate the time, so that the grounds look good for these events. And so, thank you guys for all that work, we do appreciate that. Unfortunately, because of how the state is running things, this is a very fluid deal, and it's going to be a fiscal nightmare, no matter which option we take. It's going to be a fiscal nightmare. And yes, CDFAs did finally kick down some fair money for the fairs, and one of the big things we've had is these guys' trees thrown. This is where the big expenses go, if we just use that money as one-time event to put on this fair, where we can leave together numerous maintenance projects, we need to keep these ground and these facilities in good shape. If we just kind of dump it all in one fair and then have nothing left, I don't think that's a good fiscal responsibility. You know, it's, in my opinion, at the very most, you go to Plan C and have a three-day fair, jackpot show, limit our exposure, the kids are still going to be able to show, get that experience, because it is valuable, it is extremely valuable. Get your animal fitted, ready for fair, to come in, to show it off, to get that experience of the show ring, it is vital. And then most of our needs to get your expenses back, and get a little bit of reward for the hard work you put into this animal. I know that put me through college, still in my four-H and FFA animals. I know it put my kids, it give them a lot of money. There's a fellow sitting out there on your table, he did the same thing in college, I know. Another fellow sitting down over here did the same, a bunch of you out there did the same, that's what we've done, that's how we funded ourselves. And that's how your kids are funding themselves. And so, you're right, it's about the kid, it's not about the fair and everything else. So, you know, like I said, as far as I'm concerned, Plan C is as high as I would go, and I'm glad you guys are working on the virtual fairs, I think that's just something in the future and something to incorporate, moving whether it's COVID or not, moving forward, I think it's just going to be important. So, anyway, the fair is a business, the thing is a fiscal nightmare, and I think the less money we dump into this to not reduce our costs, I think the smarter it's going to be, and you can show some fiscal responsibility and restraint, so that's where I'm at.
Do I have any other comments?
Wayne, you sit down.
Thank you. Wait, I--
Hold your down, please.
Remember a statement?
My name's Cindy Labor, and I'm a member of Safe Fresh Ranch Horse Association, we help put on the horse show for the fair. Our horse shows held Thursday, Friday, and then Ranchers Day, whatever, Saturday. My concern with going to a shorter fair is we're already trying to put a lot of events into a few days, and if you try and squeeze it into three, I'm not sure how that's going to work. We do have a lot of people that come up from other counties to join us for our show, of course, for social distancing, you don't want to get too close on a horse, but, you know, I have some concerns with trying to jam too much into the three-day fair.
Thank you. Mr. Hammel?
I just think that, you know, this is a, it's not just about the livestock, and it's about our community, and our community needs a fair, just from a mental health standpoint, way out of it. A lot of people are in, you know, down here, they have, they don't go to Reno like you do, because it's, I wouldn't go to Reno, but we, this is our hometown deal, and I mean, the people want to have something to do, and these kids, not just the livestock kids in Lassiter County, are looking forward to having a fair, so, it's way out of it, in five days, and we need something that--
I see him way in the back, and then I'll come back to you, and then I have Cheryl. So, first, please.
My name is Tyra Sillig, I'm a parent of FFA student and a four-H student, who lives in terminals or in an isolated community, so as the kids have been out of school since the middle of March, I think that at least now showing your animals, having an option, being able to at least socialize with your friends at a distance, and also doing the exhibits. A lot of those kids have worked hard on art projects and modeling, and, you know, the isolation that they've had in the last couple of months, have done a lot of psychological, you know, family to that, hey, we're, we have nobody out there. And, you know, the kids, well, Aaron knows that we've put a lot of time, Shiana, put a lot of time into this here, you know, early in the morning, you're at it late at night, from 45 days to 20 days out, so you know, that's all the money, you know, and finances is a life experience, you know, lose where you went, you know, here, gain or loss, and that is, the game of life is what I've been told. But, you know, the kids, like I said, pretty much permit crafts, you know, since March happened, and our son does have, he is a higher-risk case, you know, so, he's willing to still show, you know, so, I mean, we can't always live in fear, and I'm kind of hoping he'll be there. So, as fire departments in Sacramento and stuff, they've been talking about the mask, that's not really even a safety precaution, you know, that they, you know, studied it, yes, wash your hands, stay away from people who are sick, you know, people who are, you should have posted signs, they can do everywhere, if you have a fever, if you have any sicknesses, stay home. We also have, we spend $1,000 to $4,000 each fair or hotels, so, I'd like to at least, if possible, be able to give a 24-hour notice so that I'm not having to pay the casino, you know, money. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have a lead from Lassiter County Services, so we deal with must-have and sexual assault and a lot of other things. I completely agree with this gentleman over here, I don't remember his name, I'm Paul Cott, but as far as the behavioral health aspect of being cooped up and getting back to some normalcy, like she stated, is so important for our community, and I get the fiscal nightmare, we're nonprofit, we definitely are, and I get the general fund as well, but there are some things that we have to do to give back to our community, and taking that effort and that risk in the financial piece of it, is it worth it, you know? Creating that community, the gathering, things like that, is essential. As far as nonprofits, we live off of, we're going to skip to the next section, I apologize, but the grandstand part of it, and trying to bring in a concert, I get this is going to be needed for tens of volunteers, which we can create, and things like that, but again, fundraising is how we get that general fund. I don't know if it's the same for you guys, I don't know a lot about that part of it, but going up of that and then creating this, social distancing, it's a good gathering, it's peaceful, and it's things that our community needs, but for the grandstand part of it and the concert part of it, we live off of fundraisers, so, all of our money gets tied up in things of grant-specific, grant-wise, and just brings us up to provide survivors of domestic finance and sexual assault refunds needed for them to move forward. Thank you.
Do you? Cheryl?
I just wanted to address Cindy's comment. My plan was, even in a three-day plan, to continue to have the horse show Thursday, Friday, just like that.
Do I have any other public comment? I believe we had a motion, it's been a while, but it was to start from the-- Yeah, would Madam Clerk, would you restate the motion?
Back to the motion, twice to have the fair, the carnival, the presidential motion, yeah, for seconds.
That was Plan A.
With the virtual--
With the virtual--
With the virtual.
With our story, yes.
So, Cheryl, I have a question, under Carnival in 2019, you had a $73,000 carnival, and then Plan A, you had it estimated at $40,000?
That's not guaranteed.
That, the reason, the reason I did that was because we were going to have less people being able to come to the gate.
Okay. So, you were adjusting the carnival for the--
Yes, I just use the, I use a percentage of like, five days is 100%, three days is 60%, but then, but then, if we are just cutting the gate, like on the five-day fair, to X number of people, I just kind of did a ballpark figure, what am I--
That's all you can do there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, unless there's any other comments, I will--
Mr. Chairman, just before you vote, I just wanted to make sure we had a real flutter in how rigid we are on duration of the fair, if we have a three-day plan and a five-day plan, and then both, it just occurs to me that we may have some of the entertainment may cancel on their own.
Sure.
We've already had some, and it might be wise to give some flexibility to the staff to adjust that, if--
I believe that the entire plan, the five-day, is the start point, and then, because of the excellent work of the fair advisory board, the executive committee, and Mr. Wolcott, we would step down, depending on circumstances, either vendor-wise, or we also must face the reality that either the county or state medical officer could make a different decision.
But it also occurred to me that Dr. Corler may have some input or some preference as to whether or not it's a three-day fair or a five-day fair, the board would probably want to do some consideration, is--
Make sure it's easier for us to work back, maybe it's a-- I don't--
No, I, no, I just-- No, I, no, I, I like to put that in motion, that you start with five and you work back to three.
Yeah, I think the confusion is that we're working from Plan, Plan A, which does say five days, so maybe.
Or if the preference is five, and if we have to go to three, we go to three.
Perfect. I think that's a good.
And then I would, I would back to that position as well. With no carnival? With no carnival.
And a virtual?
And a virtual, but at the same time. We've got more bases to cover, right? Mark?
Got it.
As best we can. Certainty is the one thing and only God. And do I have any other public comment? Then I'm going to go ahead and call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. So I'm going to go ahead, even though we only have a few items left, I'm going to go ahead and give a five-minute recess now of time, and then we will pitch up. Thank you, folks, for being here. This is not an easy day. Are we back?
We're back.
All right. Let's begin with item eight three, the grant for the highway vehicle law enforcement program?
Yes. Good morning. Ryan Ruwano, Lassiter County Sheriff's Office. My shared data proposes a purchase for a side-by-side through the OHB grant program. So the Lassiter County Sheriff's Office received a grant in the amount of $4,200, or I'm sorry, $42,907 from the California Department of Parks and Recreation Off Highway Vehicle Law Enforcement Program. The purpose of the grant is to purchase a Polaris Razor XP4-1000 side-by-side to patrol the off-highway recreational areas located in Lassiter County. The attached quote totaling $30,551.19 was provided and competitively bid through Polaris government sales and events in partnership with Sourcewell. So Sourcewell is a competitively bid program that they've been awarded the bid for all the government and federal programs through Polaris. A little bit of history on our OHB program. I believe we've been a part of it for, it's either nine or 10 years. So with the California Department of State Parks and Recreation, we essentially provide them information in specific, or specifically related to our county on the OHB trail that we use, that we patrol, our partnership with the OM. And that's how we're awarded the bid process, or the award. So we currently have a side-by-side right now. It's a 2012. It's a two-seater. It's a 570. It's been, it's fairly outdated. It doesn't have a lot of suspension travel. And I'd say the biggest hang-up with our current side-by-side is that it only will basically hold two people. So the new Razor that we want will hold four people. More suspension travel. It's got bigger tires. And especially with the increase in usage in the Horse Age OHB area, which is down in Doyle, we believe that this machine will be successful in what we're looking for as far as patrolling the races. Last year, we've had three races. This year, we had two races scheduled, two canceled. And I think one's going to reschedule in November. But some of the usage that we're seeing out there, it's in excess of, you know, 400 people out there for a weekend. So it's definitely a, it's an area that's getting more usage. And we're just proud to be out there patrolling in partnership with the, the OM.
The Bureau of Mine, man.
That's correct.
Do I have, do I have any comments or questions? Mr. Alba?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first question I have is, as you look through this and you've got all your different deals on page three, if you go to your tires, usually the price goes down. But if you get over here, the extended dollars, it goes way up on the tires. Are you going to pay this? How are you going to pay for this? Are you going to, payment terms? Are you going to go with, I'm assuming, is he extended? You have $800 for the tires extended, the rest over $200?
Which one, Larry, is that exactly?
The tires versus quantity of four.
Okay. So, yeah, so it's, the MSRP is going to be per tire. The discounted price competitively bid is $209.06 per tire, and then we need four. So that's the extended price for the tires, the $836.24.
All right. Well, it's not the first thing they had it was individually, and then it's for, I just want to make sure that that was correct.
Okay.
Then the next question I have is with, you had a grant for 42, you can spend 30 on this. The extra $12,000, is that going to go to buy a trailer, or is it going to turn out, or how's that going to happen?
Now, we've, we've scaled back our grants just a little bit this year, just because of, you know, everything going on. But I think we're okay on the trailers. I think we're going to use it for personnel. Because as I stated, we do have an increase in usage with these races. For example, we got a more race in November, and there's 400 people out there, all the way from Sacramento, Reno, and everywhere. It was kind of a big deal. So we believe that we'd rather focus our money into the personnel side and have more law enforcement presence out there at the races.
Anybody else comment? All right. Looking for a motion?
No motion to approve.
Alba moves. Hampil seconds. You were looking for me yesterday. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. H4 then. It's the Sheriff's Office again, but software this time.
Dr. Moon? Dave Woolcott, sometimes in the Sheriff's Office. Chairman, Supervisors, how are we doing today? Enjoy your break. Okay, so I'm here talking about the new civil software system that we're requesting to purchase. So our current system called CERON is outdated, and it's also getting into the end of this year. And currently, there's no maintenance or support for that system. And the person that's been running, that we've been talking to, is the tire. And sometimes now he doesn't talk into our phone calls or our things, you know, or support and those kind of things. So we did a couple of bids with two different companies, Tyler, Tyler Technologies, and Telsoft, the Sheriff's Week. And Tyler Technologies came in a lot cheaper, obviously, if you guys see the port packet there. And with the Tyler, we picked Tyler. Tyler is more streamlined versus what we have now for CERON. This helps our civil personnel, which Klein, Nichols, back there, and of course, Gene, the metal is also our executive assistant, the sheriff. And so the Tyler system, it better tracks the wages and garnishments that are going to be served out there similarly. The temporary restraining orders, also the subpoenas, and eviction notices, things like that. And also with Tyler, we already purchased a license from them before, so we don't need to purchase a license again. We already have it taken care of. The interesting bit about Tyler is that there's possibility for expansion. Right now, it is sometimes when the deputies have to go out and serve, like an eviction notice or post something on someone's house, the deputy signs a form, and then they got to bring it back to our civil officers and give to them and show that he actually served those documents. And then they can submit that to the court and show that it was served. Sometimes some of those papers get lost in the shuffle. The possible expansion for Tyler is that there could be a day where we could purchase other items that we have barcodes on the actual documents. So the deputy gets served the paper where they can scan the barcode, and that will automatically upload into the system to show that it's been served. So there's no traveling between or possible losing of documents.
Self-responsibility.
Sorry? Absolutely, full responsibility, absolutely, yes. But sometimes things happen and things get lost in the shuffle. I'm sure Supervisor Gallagher can assess that. Anybody have any questions? Should we end that?
No.
Looks for a motion? Mr. Hampil?
Second.
Mr. Hampil, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any information as far as the birthday boy?
A couple of questions, Chairman. As the Chairman noted as well, I think the other four members, there's, we had an issue. Council, I got a concern about county staff participating in efforts along with the city of Suzunville to deal with the problems in campus along the river because of our differing interpretation of the rules and our interpretation of the city of Suzunville's approach conflicts with Boise, first of all.
Well, and here, we hear a lot of things about people's interpretation of the Constitution. And what we've got to remember is that there is a way, an avenue, in which you determine whether or not your interpretation of the Constitution is correct, and that's by adjudicating it in front of the judges. And so our interpretation is, I believe, what the actual letter of the law is at this point. You're being diplomatic, so quit continuing that.
Right. So we have a difference of opinion with the city, and so councils propose a meeting with their council, our council, Chairman, and Mayor to discuss those differences. Because I have a very concern about participating with our staff if it is like we think, if the city's ordinance is in conflict with Boise, first of all. So that will hopefully be happening as we connect. Also regarding ELMA, as you'll recall, several months ago, we again met with ELMA to discuss their failure to comply with their obligation to remove the Hayden Hill power line. They have not yet submitted an application to, basically what we asked them to do is one of two things. Comply with their obligation to remove it, or to submit an application that would allow them to leave. They've done neither of those things. And I, although we did meet with them again a week or so ago, and they indicated once again they were going to be with staff, and submitted an application to amend the general plan. I'm hopeful, but not real optimistic, I guess, that that will happen. And so probably bring it back to the board to discuss what we do next, if they don't. But maybe we'll give it just a little bit more time. Then next thing, budget, we're beginning to compile the budgets, and there is a lot of big numbers being thrown around as far as potential bailouts. If they come through, we'll be okay. If they don't, we're in big trouble, and so we're working on those options. And you'll probably start seeing some activity around the courthouse right now. We're, the demolition contract is beginning for this interior demolition. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. In that case, we're adjourned. I do, Dan.